Okay, council come to order, please join me in the place of allegiance. My place of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mandy, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Strayland.
Here.
And Carl Stone is not on yet, but he will be starting immediately.
All right, before we start, I need to apologize for my voice. I coached the alums in a Central College football alumni game Saturday. A lot of their best memories are me yelling at them, so I had to oblige him with a few yells. And my voice wasn't in real good shape, so it's a little weak, but we'll get through it. All right, can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
Ooh.
Support.
Vins Strayland, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have an opportunity for public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding agenda items, please step forward to microphone, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. And this is for agenda items only.
I think this is. I noticed that we're discussing Hazel Street sidewalks tonight. And just to reiterate, we really wanted these put in prior to, oh, and some at 1435 Hazel Street. We really wanted these put in prior to timber use starting. I will say one thing, ATI has been wonderful on this whole thing. They have their truck drivers slowing down, and they did send a letter out to the entire block, not just those within 300 feet. And I want, I really wish that could be done concerning this sidewalk project too, so that everybody in the 1400 block of Hazel Street could be notified that this is happening. We really don't have a real clear cut way in this community anymore of getting these projects out to the public. So if we could do something like that, so everybody would know, it would be really, I think, a goodwill gesture. But the other thing is, is when I was reading through this memo to staff, it doesn't look like we'll be funding as homeowners the project. Is that correct? Because it says the funding source, but maybe this is just for the resolution or the breakdown for Garden and Associates will be coming from the general fund. I don't know where the sources are coming from, but this area has been hit years ago. Sewer assessments, when the city paid half, and the homeowners paid half. It seems like we're getting kind of nickel to dime to death in our area, so please just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anne, could you answer a question for me?
Yeah.
I drive down there regularly to check progress, and I see very few children. How many children are there on that stretch?
Well, after school, when the buses get out, you'll see quite a few. There, up the street, there are about eight children up from our house. One of the duplexes has children in it right now that come and go. There are children on East Park Lane over there as well. We have a lot of children that come over from country club and play down from there too, so, yeah. I did take my grandson up there this weekend to look, and he thought it was a diamond mine, so we had to go hunting for diamonds.
I'm guessing ATI would appreciate finding diamonds there. Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So. I'll support it.
I gave it to you. De Young.
Pleasure.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
De Young? Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone? Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we'll move into a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with the Courtyards Land Holding LLC. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those watching at home on Pella Fiber and those in attendance, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, what we're proposing this evening is a development agreement with Courtyards Land Holding, and this is for the proposed Epcun development that is currently under construction. But just to orientate, folks, the new Five Field Extension Road is right up here. Washington Street G-28 is located right over here. Chick-fil-A would be right over here, as you can see off the screen. This development agreement is for the first phase of the Epcun development, which is approximately 35 homes on it as well. So we have Phase One right here. The entrance for this, for the Phase One would be right off Five Field Road. So Phase One is this area right in there as well. As we discussed during the plant unit development for this, this development will be marketed for individuals 55 years and older, but it is important to note that it'll be available for anyone that wishes to purchase a home within this development as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the development agreement is concerned, the developer is requesting reimbursement for the $2 million of construction costs necessary to construct Phase One of the development on it. When we look at Phase One, the estimated cost of the development is roughly $2 million in public infrastructure. And how TIF works is if council were to proceed with the development agreement with this, is we capture the incremental value of the properties that were actually built on the site. So we capture the value of the property taxes from the homes that are actually constructed on site. And what we would do, according to Iowa law, is we rebate a portion of the total property taxes back to the developer. From the developer's standpoint, it looks like about 50% of the property taxes by the time they get it back, those would be, that would be the reimbursement to the developer for the public infrastructure. It's also important to note, a portion of funds that we would use from the incremental value is to fund low and moderate income housing in Pella. So if the developer receives a $2 million reward for the public infrastructure, we'd be required out of the future revenue stream to set aside roughly $600,000 for low and moderate income housing in the future as well. And it's for these reasons that we believe it's necessary for a 15-year tax increment financing district to be established as well. So that's a very brief overview of the development agreement. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Council comments?
Mike, is this, is this a proposed TIF district? This wouldn't just be for Phase One, it'd be for the whole development down, down the road, but currently we're just looking at Phase One.
That is correct, yes.
Anything else? Okay, any comments from a member of the audience? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Or Hopkins, Vins Strayland, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Resolution Number 6740, entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Development Agreement By and Between the City of Pella, Iowa and the Courtyards Land Holding LLC. Do you have a motion for approval? So move.
Support.
Hopkins, Branderhorst, any discussion?
I've noticed there Hopkins, Derwer has already started.
Saw that, started Derwer. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6741, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Services Agreement with Garden and Associates Limited for the Hazel Street Sidewalk Elm Street to Park Lane Project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, what this resolution would do is approve an engineering services agreement with Garden and Associates for the proposed sidewalk on Hazel Street that we have. So the portion of Hazel Street that the sidewalk will be installed on is between Elm Street and Park Lane Development, so it's this highlighted area right here. Now, as far as the agreement that we are considering this evening, proposed engineering fees are just over $33,000. In addition, the latest estimates that we have as far as the total cost of construction on the project is right around $120,000. And I would also like to mention, this is included in the city's 2025 budget as far as the current fiscal year that we're in. This is proposed to be a city project as well. So council order to proceed with this, it's likely that construction on the project will take place beginning in the spring of 2025.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? De Young, Vins Strayland, any discussion?
Do you know what side of the street it's going to be on yet?
I'd like to refer that question back to Pella Board Director Danny Byer.
There's pluses and minuses when you're looking at both sides. Neither one of them is easy, neither one of them is a slam dunk. I'm leaning towards, I think it has to be on the west side. There's some major electric boxes too on the east side, making it more expensive. They're up in the air, and there's a couple yards way, way up in the air, so I'm leaning towards the west side. We'll get a survey and see what the engineers are thinking about it.
All right, thanks.
So is that why fees are 30% of proposed project?
Yeah. I mean, it's gonna be tricky from the survey and staking, you know, do we chase a couple of the driveways or several driveways? Because they're not all, the quarter, the half inch per foot rule from back to curb to that sidewalk line, whether it was ever installed or not, was not adhered to on that street. We have other streets like that, but some, some are way up and some are way down. You know, not always are we happy with sidewalk going up and down, up and down, so. All that's gonna be in their survey and their profile as they apply.
And also, Danny, some of it, as far as the engineering fees is part of the construction budget, the smaller project, the engineering fees are gonna be a certain higher, a percentage higher. And the reason for that is this will be a public improvement project, and regardless whether it's a $120,000 project or a $2 million project, the engineers are required to do certain things under Iowa law for this. And so the smaller the project, generally the higher percentage of engineering fees that the city usually has on these as well.
I'm still concerned that my 120 is low, too. That's a number we've been carrying, but it's kind of based on the sidewalk program. By the time we do cuts and fills, I'm just afraid that number's low, but you'll also tell if I'm wrong or I feel that.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the resolution, or the motion to pass resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6742, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Services Agreement with Garden Associates Limited for the Airport Access Road Project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor Duarte stated, we're proposing, again, it's another engineering services agreement with Garden and Associates. This is for the hard servicing of the airport entrance road. If you were to go out there and take a look at the Pella Municipal Airport, it's located right over here. And basically, from this point forward, the highlighted area is a gravel road. But what's being proposed is to hard service the road that we have. Now, the engineering service agreement that we have with Garden and Associates is the proposed fees are just shy of $56,000. We're estimating the facility and reconstruction budget could be in the range of about $375,000 on this. Now, as far as the airport committee and the input that we've received from the airport committee, they would like to have this project done yet this fall. And so we're gonna try to be able to bid letting yet this fall, potentially do the project this fall. But it would not, it's not out of the realm of possibility that it's likely to occur in the spring of 2025 as well. So that's the rough timeline on the project. And once again, this project was also included in the city's current fiscal year budget. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion?
I have a question. With that, is there any chances could get run and followed with the airport planning thing? They might want to move the road, or is that?
Yeah. I'll let Danny, Danny chime in, and I'll chime in too, Danny. So if you, if you want to get your, your input, then I'll give my input on that very subject too, so.
I think there's no doubt. There's two or three controlling factors, and as we go forward with the master plan, the new ALP, this road will be throwaway. The thought is, if we get 10 to 12 years out of it, we still did okay. It's asphalt. You know, you look at some other asphalt roads, we've got one we're working on the 18th year, I believe, and it's starting to fall apart bad, so, you know, it's a lot cheaper way to go than the PC. I'd be jumping up and down if you're trying to spend money on PC, because it, yeah. There's some new restrictions and setbacks and stuff that's gonna dictate it, slide it further east, I believe.
Councilmember Butler, the input that we received from the Pella Airport Committee is they'd like to have this project done as soon as possible, and that's our direction. And I answered the question on that, the first thing out of the chute is we're gonna have to update the airport's long-term master plan. The master plan is actually for what, the ultimate design of the airport over the next 20 years. Now, sometime in the next 20 years, could there be a potential conflict with the airport expansion and this road? The answer is yes, but hopefully, as Danny stated, the road, that potential conflict could be potentially 10 to 12 years down the road. Now, what I've heard from the FAA is the land side needs are always first. So the number one concern would be probably the first project out would be here towards the Pella runway on it as well, so. Not necessarily future expansion within foreseeable future.
Well, I don't want to delay that, for sure.
Okay, anything else? All right, we will vote on the motion to approve the resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on, Resolution Number 6743, entitled Resolution Accepting Public Improvements for the Dingeman Industrial Park. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, what this resolution simply does is accept public improvements for the street extension for the Dingeman Industrial Park improvements. You can see a picture of the street assets. We had roughly 360 feet of the street extensions that was constructed by Mr. Dingeman on it. The engineers, the letter that we had on the project states that it was constructed according to the city plans and specifications on this. And so we are recommending approval and acceptance of this, of the street improvements this evening. It is also important to note, this resolution also releases the restrictions prohibiting the developer from selling A, A Lot B, or A Lot Two of their development as well. Those restrictions were in place until this road extension that we're considering this evening, until the road was completed. So again, this formally releases those restrictions along with accepting the public improvements this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Branderhorst, De Young, any discussion?
I, I would just like to say, it's Mr. Dingeman somewhere, I'm not seeing him. Thank you. I, I really, when this project started and we looked at the plans, I didn't know how we could glamorize a storage unit. But I, when you go past and look at it, and I invite all of you to do that, I think you exceeded the expectation. That, that is a great-looking storage unit, so thank you. Thank you for going above and beyond.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion to approve the resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
I'm staying calm.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
And Carl Stone is disconnected for a minute.
So we got four, right? Yeah, okay. Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6744, entitled Resolution Approving, Ordering the Preparation of Plans and Specifications Form of Contract Notice of Hearing and Notice of Letting, Setting Date for Public Hearing, Authorizing the Taking of Bids and Authorizing Bid Opening for the Coanus Park Phase Three Site Improvements Project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Really, when we talk about this resolution, what we're really doing is we're establishing October 1st as the public hearing for this project, and we're also authorizing staff to solicit bids for the project. Now, what's being proposed, with this as the next phase of the Warner Spielin project, the engineer's estimated cost on the project is at $268,000. Now, according to our partnership agreement that we have, the city will be contributing $150,000 on this portion of the project. And we do give a description of the project up here as well. There'll be considerably more details shared publicly by October 1st, but in essence, staff is recommending approval of the resolution this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
De Young, Branderhorst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6745, entitled Resolution Authorizing Permanent Transfer of Surplus Funds from the Pella Municipal Electric Utility to the City of Pella. Mike?
Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Duarte stated, what this resolution would do is authorize us to transfer surplus funds from the city's electric utility for long-term, to the long-term facility fund plan that we have. Now, previously discussing the long-term facility plan, the two buildings that are being proposed are renovation, is renovation, and also expansion of the Pella Community Center, as well as the proposed indoor recreation center. To date, we've had engineering expenses on both of these projects. Now, during previous discussions with council, what's been approved to date by council is use of up to roughly $5.5 million of surplus funds that will be utilized for these projects. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the transfer is considered, this evening, we do have the expenditures as of June 30th for both of these projects to date. As far as the indoor recreation center, we're just over $2,183,000. The Pella Community Center is over $152,000, so that leaves us with total expenditures of $2,335,759.60. Now, previously, the council has approved transferring funds from the city's electric utility of $1,323,000, which leaves us for the proposed transfer that we're considering this evening of $1,012,539.60. We also thought it'd be a good idea to just briefly go over the surplus funds that we have from the electric utility of roughly $5.5 million. Previously, the transfers were $1,323,000. Tonight, we're considering a transfer of just over $1,012,000, which leaves us with remaining committed funds of just over $3.1 million. Now, should be noted that preparing for tonight's resolution, the American Public Power Association has a calculation of fund balance or the minimum fund balance for the city's electric utility. We included that in the council packet on that as well. But we believe from staff's perspective that the electric utility should have a minimum fund balance of $9.6 million. As of June 30th, 2024, the utility has a fund balance of $14.5 million. So we do not believe that this transfer would cause us to go negative as far as or below our minimum thresholds for the city's electric utility fund balance. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation on this item. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Or Hopkins, De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now, I'm gonna say a few words in this resol, next resolution that I've never said in my life. Resolution Number 6746, entitled Resolution None Pro Tuned Correcting and Amending a Schreiber's Error in the Legal Description of the Epcun Residential Urban Renewal Area for the Epcun Residential Urban Renewal Plan. Did I say him right, Mandy?
I'm trying to see it again.
Mike, can you please explain?
We'll, we'll try, Mr. Mayor, on this one. I think the easy explanation is when we adopted the city's urban renewal plan for the Epcun subdivision, along with the TIF ordinance with that as well, there was a slight error in the legal description for both of those items. The resolution that we're considering this evening corrects the legal description for the urban renewal plan, that's the resolution. The ordinance that we're considering this evening corrects the legal description for the ordinance this evening. And once we get to the ordinance, I'll add a few more comments, but that's really what, what was the heart of the matter was, there was a, there was a slight error in the legal description. Both those need to be exact in these matters, and unfortunately, we need to consider in both of these items once again. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have on either one of these items.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Or Hopkins, De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to Ordinance Number 1043, entitled An Ordinance Providing That General Property Taxes Leaved and Collected Upon or Each Year on Certain Property Located Within the Epcun Residential Urban Renewal Area in the City of Pella, County of Marion, State of Iowa, By and For the Benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Pella, County of Marion. Pella Community School District and Other Taxing Districts Be Paid to a Special Fund for Payment of Principal and Interest on Loans, Monies Advanced to an Indebentess, Including Bonds Issued or to be Issued Incurred by the City in Connection with the Epcun Residential Urban Renewal Area, Phase One Property, and this is the first reading. I think you indicated you might have something to add.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, yes, I do. In addition to correcting the legal description for, for the ordinance, basically what this ordinance does on, on the matter is with the ordinance, it allows us to collect the incremental property taxes that are collected within this area. So if you remember during the development agreement, we said that we're gonna rebate property taxes off the new houses that were built in this area. The means that we would go about doing this is through this ordinance, and so what we're establishing is a special area that we collect those incremental values and rebate it back to the developer for the, to reverse them for the cost of the public infrastructure.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Branderhorst, De Young, any discussion?
And did I, we have already approved this, just with the wrong words.
Correct.
No, we're, no, we're.
That is correct.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to Ordinance Number 1047, entitled, entitled An Ordinance Amending Solid Waste Fees in the City of Pella, Iowa, this is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and we did discuss this proposed ordinance during the city's budget process and also during policy and planning. Where the city is in a position where there needs to be a rate increase, what we have, the 10% is what we've traditionally discussed, it's a part of the budget process. What's being proposed with this rate increase is a small total increase of $1.26 per month. A large total would be $1.84. It is important to note, during the last meeting, I believe, Councilmember Hopkins discovered or suggested or reminded everyone it was since 2011 was the last time we increased solid waste fees. So unfortunately, we look at waste offset rate increases, and just over time, the rates do need to be adjusted, and staff is recommending approval of this proposed ordinance this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, De Young, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Dan Strayland?
Yes.[1696.42] Butler?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
For Brandon Horst, DeYoung. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynerworth?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Raynerworth?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to ordinance number 1048 entitled An Ordinance Amending Mollengrot parking rates in the City of Pella. This is the first reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the board for a presentation on this item. And as Mayor Ward stated, what this proposed ordinance would do would increase the parking rates at the city's parking garage. It's just below the Mollengrot development on it. And specifically, the rate increase would be phased in over two phases. On January 1st, 2025, the rates would go up from $50 per month up to $67.50, and then from $67.50 up to $85 effective July 1st, 2025 as well. Now, the current rate of $50 per month for the Mollengrot parking has been in place since 2005. And once again, very similar to the solid rate increases, solid waste increases, excuse me, we believe the increase is justified and needed as well, and we are recommending approval this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move.
For DeYoung, Hopkins. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Raynerworth?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, can I get a motion for approval of our abstract of bills number 2158?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
For Brandon Horst and Strickland. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynerworth?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member of any other business you'd like to have addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address the council with this evening? If so, please step forward the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Patty Van Zany. I live 1117 Big Rock Park Road, and I am the president of the Friends of the Pella Community Center. And I'm here to announce that you're all invited to our million-dollar open house on September 14th. There'll be a coffee time. The Buneus Kiper has engineered, so it will be good. And then the Art Center has come up with a heart mural and tiles that you can purchase and make and paint, or you can paint yourself as a fundraiser, and they'll be there to talk more about the mural. And I did invitations to all of you, but Mike Priner and I was rushing, so they didn't get one to you. I'm sorry.
Perp.
And that'll be from 10 o'clock in the morning, so, and with tours and the fiber optics.
Short presentation.
Short presentation at 10:30. I also want to announce that before we left here, I got an announcement that we have a $500,000 pledge from the premier charitable foundation. So, that puts us at, as Don corrected my math, which is what teachers are supposed to do, and that puts us at $1.3 million raised today. So, thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Cheyena Schaefer, 198th Place. I am the business owner of the Timeless Tulip, located at 1417 Washington Street, Building 8. I am requesting an appeal of the city code that prohibits signage and changing of signage within the railroad right-of-way 60 foot from the curve of Washington Street. I am a young entrepreneur in the city of Pella. I have equipped myself with everything to possibly be successful as far as like my degree. I have a degree in horticulture and entrepreneurship, but I'm being cut off at the knees by not being allowed to have a sign at the road so people driving past can find my business. This is a building I can afford as a young entrepreneur, and I'm just not given the tools to succeed in this situation. So, I'd really like it if you would consider this appeal so I can get a sign by the road so people can find me and my business can keep growing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll make a note. I don't know what the details are, but we can certainly have a discussion on that.
Yeah, we'll follow up, Mrs. Schaefer. We'll follow up with our planning zoning department on your specific issue. We'll be in touch with you, as well as we'll update council on it as well.
Okay, anyone else? All right, then we will adjourn to our policy and planning. We have a few items to discuss. First, Friends of the Community Center request regarding heritage gym repairs. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor Ward stated, we are here to discuss proposal by the Friends of the Community Center. Now, this proposal deals with issues that are currently occurring at the gym and the community center. And before we turn the floor over to the Friends to review their proposal, I'd like to ask Community Services Director Jeanette Vaughn, if you could please give us an update on the issues with the gym floor. And also, we also have had input from our engineer on the project, which is Shimmer and Associates.
Sorry, door keeps, when I say is this on, but as far as the gym floor, we noticed about two, three months ago that some of the floorboards were starting to buckle in there. I reached out to the Shimmer and Associates and kind of gave them a heads-up on what was happening. And their first response was it's probably moisture buildup causing the planks to expand. Since then, it's continued to get worse. I've sent additional pictures off to them, and they did provide a letter for us that they believe it's either the high humidity or there could be water infiltration on the west side of the building. But in either case, removal of the ceiling tiles and allowing us to get back in there and get it cleaned up and keep the doors open on a more regular basis will help reduce some of that humidity in there, and will certainly help the situation.
Okay, any questions for you?
How will we figure out if it's a seepage or just, will they remove boards along that tile of the building?
The first thing that we'd like to do is address the removal of the tiles with the blue asbestos on it, and then we can then get safely other contractors in to take a look at it. Some of those are the two worst sections pictured up there, which we can probably just pull the boards up in those two areas and give a look at it. But our number one goal is to just make it safe so we can get people in there to start looking at it, and also keep the door up near the office open more to help circulate air, which is what we haven't been doing in the past since 2018.
You guys have a presentation or discussion for us?
Well, I apologize. It's not really a presentation, and there's going to be some material here that's going to be on the floor. It's going to be duplication. We didn't update this, but I just wanted to express from the, by Marvin Van Zany, 1117 Big Rock Park Road, treasurer of the Friends of the Pella Community Center. And I'm here to speak about our proposal to rescue the heritage gym floor. Recently, the wood floor in the heritage gym has begun to buckle, threatening the integrity of the entire floor. The gym has been closed since 2018 as a public safety issue because ceiling tiles were falling due to the failure of the asbestos-based glue. For the past six years, the doors to this gym have been closed to prevent public access. Staff and the architect assigned to the renovation of the project believe this has allowed humidity to build up to unacceptable levels, contributing to the wood floor buckling. We asked an emergency spending decree to remove the gym ceiling tiles so the doors can be reopened. This will allow adequate ventilation and reduce the humidity level within the gym. The Friends of the Pella Community Center Board have authorized up to $60,000 to remove the ceiling tiles, abate the asbestos, and patch the floor where necessary. The cost will be funded from grants received from Marion County Community Foundation and the premier charitable foundation. While the city council has not yet approved the scope of the facilities upgrade project, reopening the heritage gym is included in both the base and base-plus plans for the community center. So, as stated by the architect in his memo, this funding will not be wasted. More importantly, it may prevent significantly more expensive replacement of the entire floor. This will not reopen the gym for general public use. That will wait until the renovation is complete. However, it will ensure that if the public, including children going to the Art Center, wander into the gym, they will not be at risk of injury from falling tiles or exposure to asbestos. We have been advised by the Marion County Community Foundation that the grant given to us in the 2023 grant cycle for asbestos abating in the heritage gym must be spent this year or it will be lost. In 2023, we'd expect the renovation to begin with the community center by December of 2024. However, it is clear that is no longer possible. So, just asking that you allow us to use this grant to help rescue the heritage gym floor. Again, we stand by to assist with this however we can. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
So, the long-term plan is to keep the wooden floor that's there.
Correct. I hope it don't have to replace it. If we have to replace it, we will. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Comments, council?
I'm appreciative to the Friends of the Community Center for coming up with a solution. And if it weren't for a grant written by Rhonda Carmode for the gym, we would be kind of scrambling as a city government right now and trying to determine what should be done. Because of your proactivity, for me, it's a very easy thing tonight to do, to sit here and say, well done, good job, you just saved the gym. So, thank you. Earlier, you thanked us. But I think the auspice of thank you belongs in that front row right over there.
Do we have any idea what the cost of doing, what needs to be done is, or estimate at all?
Yeah, I had an estimate from 2022 that we're working on getting updated. At that time, it was right around, just shy of $36,000. So, we'll be well under the 60 for at least that part of the project. And we'll wait and see what the repairs on the floor will cost. But yeah, we should adequately cover it.
It's a no-brainer. That's the only. Yeah, whatever we need to do to get it going.
Fascinates me how the thinking about asbestos has changed. I mean, how many decades wasn't that gym used? I never gave it a thought.
Well, floors that stayed under the tiles, we were fine, but when they've started falling down, that's the problem.
A little different world, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think there's any opposition trying to move it forward, whatever we need to do to get the work done.
Yeah, from staff's standpoint, if we do proceed with the emergency, and it depends on the viewpoint of the project, we're going to go out and try to line up a contractor with Shimmer and Associates to take care of this project. So, all right.
Good. Okay, moving on, economic development request. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what we had this evening is a request from Red Rock Chiropractic Incorporated. And specifically, what the request is, is reimbursement of the sanitary sewer extension line that is being constructed to the project site, which we believe is 1406 Washington Street. Now, overall, when we look at this request, the estimated cost of the sanitary sewer extension, which would be built according to city standards and then dedicated to the city as a public sanitary sewer, is approximately $115,000. Now, part of the project is required to build the proposed building that you see up on the board for Red Rock Chiropractic. It was being proposed as a 2,000 square foot building up here with an estimated cost of $780,000 for the project. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, a couple items. When we talk about economic development requests and new commercial buildings, it is important to note on July 3rd of this year, the city council did adopt the West Side Urban Renewal Plan, and we do have a picture of the map of the West Side Urban Renewal Plan. Now, the primary goal of the urban renewal plan is to stimulate the commercial and industrial development on this as well. The subject property that we have is actually in this red highlighted area right here. So, it's just outside of the urban renewal plan. So, what would have to happen if the city was, if the city council was interested in exploring economic development incentives for this proposed development, we would have to amend the plan and then proceed with economic development request formal consideration after the amendment of the plan. Now, the positive man, the urban renewal plan is typically somewhere in the vicinity of $3,000 to $7,000 on this matter. And so, before proceeding with amending the plan, we wanted to come on to make sure that council was in favor of economic awarding economic development incentives for this proposed project. And that's what we're here to seek direction from the city council this evening. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, when we talk about economic development incentives, a little bit of background on this as well. Recently, we've been awarding economic development incentives to identify what we would consider strategic priorities, and that has been mainly housing developments that we've had in our community. Those are mentioned as priorities within the city's comprehensive plan. In addition, the city council has awarded economic development incentives recently for commercial projects, which we were intending to increase the city's both population and workforce, as well as our tourism base. Now, when we look at this proposed project, as you recall, we believe the overall estimated cost of the project is roughly about $780,000. That's staff's understanding. We believe that the building valuation on that could be in the vicinity of $665,000. Now, that means if that was the case, if it was valued at $665,000, we believe that the tax increment financing revenues from the project would be about $14,000 per year. So, considering this matter, it's estimated tax increment financing, financing revenues that would be available to support the development would be about $14,000, or to support economic development incentives would be about $14,000 per year. Now, as far as the sanitary sewer line extension that we have up here as well, we did have this included in the council packet. It is this green highlighted area. Based on staff's preliminary review on it, we believe that the line extension is necessary to be able to build this building, but it's questionable if any other parties or new developments would be able to utilize this line. And the reason why it's questionable is just because of the way that the land would be able to gravity flow into the new sewer. Now, it's impossible. Someday redevelopment use could occur along there. The line may be used. It is possible, but we're not aware of anything in the foreseeable future based on our review. It is also important to note anytime we talk about economic development incentives, other developers have been required to extend sanitary sewer lines, and we are aware of others that have been required that were not reimbursed for the sanitary sewer line as well. So, please keep that in mind as we make decisions on this request. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the items, generally, this is the list that we go through when we receive economic development requests. On this one, I wanted to come and get the input of council before making decisions on it. I thought it was a good idea to get the input. Now, when you look at the project itself, it's a $780,000 building. It's going to be a nice addition to our community. But when you start talking about economic development incentives and supporting it, these quickly develop into policy issues and you need to consider matters because you always have the law of unintended consequences on the matter. And that's why we wanted to talk with the council before making a recommendation to the city council. So, this list that we have up here is generally the items that we consider when we go down the list. First one is, does the project meet a strategic priority that's been established by the city council? That's the first question that we usually ask. Second question that we like to have on here is, would the project increase the city's tax and utility base on it? We believe that the answer to that one is yes. The third question is, does the size of the project and additional jobs created justify economic development incentives? What we like to see on projects, and this would be on commercial projects, is the jobs created on it. That's always an important factor. What we've done on both commercial and industrial projects in the past, not necessarily the deciding factor, but it's certainly one of them is beneficial to the project. It's something we do need to consider, especially when we receive economic development requests, and we need to make decisions on them as well. Now, as far as the project, would it be able to support, when we talk about the public infrastructure, would it be able to support future development, or is it limited to just purely the development sites? So, in other words, when we build public infrastructure, would this be able to be used to support additional public development or development within our community, or is it based, or would it be limited just to the development site? And the last question that we have is, would awarding incentives establish a precedent, excuse me, which would be problematic for the city in the future on this matter? So, that's our list of questions. Mandy, do we have any other additional slides on here? I see that we have Dr. Smith in the audience too, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to give him an opportunity to address council. But before we turn the floor over, ask Dr. Smith if he has any additional comments for council's consideration. Does council have any questions from the staff viewpoint?
This is on the west side of the north side of the building.
Yes.
Right next to the back door manufacturing.
That is correct.
So, the elephant in the room is what's going to happen to the indoor property, and how is that presently served by sanitary sewer?
It goes south and east and down the corridor. It goes into the public manhole behind Vinessen's and the, Vinessen's is in Service Pro now, because this block is allowed to be platted by platter survey. So, it might say Service Pro, check the service with them. And them and the factory go together in a manhole. By our, say it's private, then it goes to our manhole across the street behind Vinessen's to a public manhole.
Now, Danny, if the property, then council member DeYoung's question is, Mandy? Danny, if the property, then council member Deon's question is, Van Gogh, did it redevelop someday? Is it possible that this sanitary sewer line extension could be used for that redevelopment?
I don't see a reason they couldn't continue using theirs, even though it's in poor condition, they'd probably rebuild on that route.
Could this dovetail onto that existing?
No. The, the, the city code, you, you're supposed to, your sewer service is to go to a public sewer in your frontage. In this case, we're allowed to go down the right way to chase a sewer that was extended by the Duaneville off piece. There's a manhole in the corner of Burger King. So, they were made to extend it that far. And of course, just down the road, Starbucks is gonna extend theirs to about twice this length at their cost, from the southeast corner of Central Tire to in front of their, their place on their lot.
Just so everyone's aware, when we talk about the sanitary sewer extension, it's kind of, it's just, it doesn't show up really well on our board, but it's this segment right here.
How many, Danny, you, how many projects, if we, if we said yes to this, how many cans of worms would this open?
A whole lot. I tell people bad news and cost them money every day, so I make new friends all the time. You know, so that's, yeah. Who is that next? I, I don't have that next to me. Starbucks was the most recent.
Are you, you're saying Starbucks was the most recent project that we incentivized the project? Is that what you were saying?
No, we didn't pay for any of the sewer.
No, but we did pay, we did share costs on other things.
Just the road, the road, the street.
They're paying for half the road.
Yeah. But I, I guess.
I don't, I don't think you can compare that to this, because that's a, that road is public.
Right.
And actually, it's a good deal for us, because they're paying for it.
Right, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I'm just wondering, was Mr. Smith told when he purchased the land that there was sewage there? Because that's, isn't there a disclaimer when you buy something, if there is sewer or not sewer?
That's between him and his realtor.
Okay, this seems a little confusing to me.
It's called due diligence.
Yeah?
Mr. Mayor, there's no additional questions for staff, or I see council member Butler.
So, if we add him to the urban renewal piece, what does that do for him?
What does that?
What does that do for, for him, for that property?
Well, absent the urban renewal, if we're gonna use tax increment financing rebates, for say, for instance, for sanitary sewer, we cannot award economic development incentives for this project unless it's in the urban renewal plan. So, that's the first step that has to occur.
It can't even be considered unless that happens, and then that still doesn't guarantee that that's gonna, gonna be a forward.
So, we, we have to amend, we have to amend the plan.
Gotcha.
Sure, remove the aesthetics of that piece of property compared to what's there now.
And it's our understanding, again, before Dr. Smith comes to the podium, it's our understanding, and Dr. Smith's correct, make them wrong, but we were informed that economic development incentives would be necessary for the project to move forward. That's the other question that's usually up there, and always want, want, probably the first question that should be asked is, would the project proceed without economic development incentives? What we received from the developers' answer is, no, it would not.
So, Danny, Danny mentioned that, he tells people all the time, it's gonna cost them money. Could you kind of just walk through, kind of in detail, when someone comes to the city and wants to build a new one, can you go through the steps that need to happen for that? For, for them to get the approval and all of that? So, I know onsite infrastructure, there's an offsite infrastructure, all of that is talked about upfront, right?
Yeah, it's very common. I mean, we had a couple of those meetings today. They're typically a pre-op meeting. Everybody sits down, they look at city maps, city infrastructure, where the sewer, where the water got to come from.
Can you come to the mic, please?
I didn't think I did. You do yell a little loud when a kid is in the room.
Okay.
But yeah, in, in those meetings, here's the sewer, here's the water. Unfortunately, I think there was a pre-op on this Platte Survey that caused this problem, splitting this lot too. And thereby, service pro took the service with, you might say. I was not at that pre-op. It was a period of time here that we weren't included in some of those. And I think that's where that fell through the cracks, maybe with Mr. Smith. Like, our, our doors were always open, our maps were always on the wall, in the drawer, and on the computer, and some of them on the website, so. And, and that's true whether it's one lot, five lots, subdivision, ten, you know, a hundred, you know, because sewer's everything, no doubt. Water's easy, it's only five feet deep, smaller size, sewer's gravity, you gotta have soap, it's deep. In this case, there's a lot of utilities involved, that right away is full, as, as well as Starbucks. There's equally as hard, it's full of utilities down there.
Danny, to your, to your knowledge, has the city ever paid for a private sewer extension?
Oh, boy, I don't, you know. No, you'd have to jump into some of these bigger trunk sewers, where they were fee districts, or done by assessment, or whatever, or developer off-site. You know, most recently, extended that trunk out west, you know, was that $900,000? I believe the, the developer reimbursed us the $900,000 or other jack. So, that's a problem with a public sewer. You know, if it's service, and a slab on grade and a service, that's pretty easy. You can stay, you know, two, three feet out of the building and minimal fall and, you know, get somewhere. But here, when it's a public sewer, it's gonna be deep, starting out amongst a lot of utilities. I don't, that 115 is not our number. I'm anxious now, and I apologize, I didn't know how in-depth this was tonight. I have a bid amount of what Starbucks bond amount is for, and it seems to me it was cheaper than that. But I'm anxious to go back and see it in the morning.
And, and along that point, too, just so council understands, how development agreements work, is the developer may have an estimate on their infrastructure, and the city is always up to that amount. We always have our engineers look at it as part of the development agreement. But before the developer is reimbursed, they have, it's always states, estimated amount or actual cost, whichever's less on, on the matter. So, that is reviewed as part of the development agreement process before reimbursements occur on, on public infrastructure.
Well, from my, from what, my perspective, I see that without this improvement, it won't happen. And this is the improvement that property needs. The, the road helps Starbucks, the signal helps Quick Star. And those, you know, those are other, those are the improvements that they either asked for, or we had, or we volunteered to do. And so, to get this project to happen, it just seems like we're gonna have to come to the table and help out. Now, you showed that the tax incremental financing of $14,000 a year income from taxes, and certainly pay for the project in less than 10 years, less than 10 years. So, it's not a terrible thing to put the sewer in. And the sewer doesn't have to be part of everybody's project, everybody's project stands on its own. You can, you can say, on this project, we're gonna do half a million dollars. We'll match half a million. On this project, we'll match a hundred. This one, $65,000, or whatever. You get to this, we get to decide what we're gonna spend on the infrastructure projects to get them to come, to get people to come and do it, and how they spend the money is, whatever they get done with the money, or whatever. It's, it's just that this is an unusual case, it doesn't need a street, it doesn't need a signal, it just needs a sewer. That's all.
Before we have more discussion, because we need to, I need to find out what councils, where councils at. I'm not real sure yet. I would like to hear if Ryle has anything he'd like to add to the discussion for us. Please take some time to do that.
So, yeah, this has been my, that project for the last year and a half. When I purchased the land, I really was hoping this would be simple, I didn't have to go through this. This has been one heck of a ride again. I, I'm, I'm used to being the unique person between what's on Five Field, the south side, and then now on the north side. He's right, when I did purchase it, it did say sewer. That's between me and the real estate people, we are going to take care of that. And we did do our due diligence with this plot. We had a pre-purchase meeting with my real estate and Pinesy. We laid out all of our plans, we put a nice little picture up, we actually had a site plan ready, and said, do we need anything for this? Nope, you're good. I thought it was good. We get Gardner Associates involved, we go through all of that meeting. Good. At the end of Gardner Associate meeting, we have another sit-down, we have no sewer. Now, it keeps escalating, it's 20 feet deep. That's the cost problem, other than with this. We have to go tear up the main roads, we're taking the turning lane, we're taking the Volkswagen trail out to dig a new manhole or link into this manhole that's 20 feet deep, and then driving it 390-some feet back to my property. We can't traditionally trench it, we have to bore an eight-inch main all the way through, then put a full-on manhole in front of my business. You know, I wish we could simplify this, there's one about 45 feet just behind my building that we could link into. This could have been resolved, done. A, if I would have been told from the very beginning, we have no sewer, when we had our pre-meeting, our first meeting, our second meeting, not our third or fourth meeting. Hell, I would have walked away. This is way too much work. But now we're here, and I just want to get this resolved. I'm not trying to be a problem child here, I just wanna see something, I should come to this nasty old lot. If we could bypass the whole initiative, let me hook up to the one right behind me, let's do it, let's hook up, I'll pay it, we will be done. I agree, I doubt anybody else is gonna hook up to this, it's kind of a wasteful thing that we have to do. But he's right, unless I can put a sewer system in, a sand pit, some type of a drainage pump station, then, then the lot's worthless, and then I don't know why I've wasted my year and a half doing this. So, I'd like to consider two things, if you guys would let me hook up to the one on the north side that's 40 feet, let's do it, let's simplify it. If we can't, and I have to put a full main in and bore it under all, all this, yeah, I'd like to have something come back in, in initiative. I think we can work together, I'm not a multi-billion dollar company, Starbucks and anybody else. I know it hurts them to spend a couple hundred grand. But for something of a small businesses, and I heard a sign request, which is my neighbor, please let her have a sign. I've been fighting for 15 years for a sign, so we all would love a sign. That's why I bought this property, is because I can't have a sign. These are simple things we can do to make us local guys profitable, usable, happy. It's not hard. So, letting us all out, I think it'd be nice if you guys would help us a little. Again, I want to build this and make a nice contribution to our town, and yes, it's another $14,000 tax incentive that we're adding to the budget of Appella. Yeah, if you could, please let us, I mean, I, I'll take the easy way out, I'll go north, I'll pay for it, no incentives. If we have to go a long way, please help me out, it's a local business and returning business, we'd love to do that. And if you guys have any questions, shoot them, I'm glad to answer them.
I do.
Please.
Why can you not go 45 feet north? I'm sure there's a logical.
So, the code stipulates you have to come forward to the, to the front.
No, that's not true.
Okay.
That's privately owned, excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
Van Gogh put us that, and they've actually said no to anybody hooking up.
Okay.
That has been explored, it's extremely shallow. Where they come into a joint manhole, a service pro now, it's extremely shallow and in poor condition, and it's my understanding they've said no.
Okay, so you're telling me.
They've had enough of their own problems.
That the pitch of the land is not conducive for, for him.
Even if they can go in by gravity, we don't own, don't control, we can't tell, so we've gotta have, this guy hook up to your sewer.
Okay.
Knowing they've already got their own issues.
Uh-huh. Shoot, would have been easy.
That would be nice. So, downward down left to a 400-feet, eight-inch boring with manhole, underneath two driveways, and all the electric and a 20-foot deep pit.
Okay, any other questions for Ryle? So, just, I, I really need to correct something, everybody keeps talking about Starbucks. That is not a Starbucks building. Starbucks is a tenant in a building being built by somebody else. So, Starbucks is not the investor in the building. They are a tenant in the building. So, because everybody throws around a million-dollar companies in this, Starbucks is not building the building. They're a tenant, someone else is building a company.
And that was unfair for me to use that.
Well, I'm not saying, it happens a lot. It's, it's some company from Wisconsin or Michigan that's building the building, it's not Starbucks building. Let's make sure that we understand that.
Yep, thank you for that question.
I like facts, not opinions and what everybody thinks.
And that's true, I shouldn't have used that as an example, but I, I'm trying to bring local businesses, trying to build a business that has been agreed a lot for how many years, and I can't believe this has caused this much of a problem.
Okay, thanks, Ryle.
Thank you.
So, there was a list of questions, you know, that they ask about economic development. And so, I think, you know, that's what our staff does when they, when someone comes with an economic development or wants to build something, they start asking these questions. So, I just, I, I, there's no one in this room more supportive of economic development than I am, I'm very vocal about that. So, I'll support whatever council decides on, but what I, the, the thing I want to make sure we all understand, if we do this, it's a policy change, not just one property we're dealing with. Because the policy that has been, the city Appella's policy for a long, long time has been that onsite infrastructure, if there's, you know, a new driveway required, whatever, that all comes from the developer. And the city Appella has not paid for that in the past. If this, so, we need, I think, in my opinion, we need to think of this as a policy change, because we're gonna get, everybody that wants to do a project is gonna be asking to get it paid for by the city Appella. So, I think we need to, to understand that. We've done two economic development incentives that I know about since I've been here. We did the market down here, and I wanted to help this, I think they're distinctly different than this project in the fact that the market and South Main were all in a, what was determined to be a blighted area. That's different. When your area is deemed blighted, you can do different things with economic development. And I think, from a community standpoint, we gave an incentive for that. We turned an eyesore on our main street, an old school that had been run down to nothing, and there was a big old yellow house that the 40 years that I've lived here was an eyesore to the community, and we, and it got changed because it was declared blighted. The other one we did was economic development for the Prairie Ridge area and the Smash Park and the Chick-fil-A area commercially. But as Danny just said, part of that project, the developers paid $990,000 to run a sewer line to there, to develop it all. They also put in, I believe it was a $1.4 million street into the commercial area that is a public, everybody uses it, that whole development uses that sewer. The, the chick, or the, where the Starbucks is going in that building, that was a public street, that we're getting half of that paid for by that, by the developer there. They're paying for all their own sewer into that project. That's vastly different than this, in my opinion. And then you talked about the Quick Star. We're talking about turning lanes and streetlights. Anybody that tries to get on Washington Street understands how much we need streetlights to create some gaps in their traffic, because if you're not, if you're trying to get on that street, sometimes it takes you 20 minutes. And so, I think, I think those are all public, those are public improvements that the public is gonna benefit from. This is a one-lot, one-user project. And if we pay for it, again, I'll support whatever comes from the group here. But if we, if, I just wanna make sure we all understand, if we do it, what we're really doing. And in my opinion, it's a policy change. We're declaring a policy change for developing, so.
I'm, I'll, I'll just go, I'm a hard to tell on this, as much as, as much as I appreciate the, the cost increase based on it. And in part, these questions, but also I personally have two properties right now that if this gets passed, then I'll have to step down from council and request the same, the same type of funding. So it's, like, I'm, I'm personally aware of the cost that these types of things add to a project, not just like out there where I get it and it makes a project, take slower pay, et cetera. But like the mayor said, it's a policy issue. That's bigger than just helping, making a decision on the one time. I, I hate, I hate to say, like, oh, that stinks. I want to, I want to help everybody who has a request, but this is, this doesn't fit the bill for me.
Can I just have one last statement?
Yep, you bet.
So, like I said, if I would've known this prior to, we would've not gone down that, you buying that land, you had that knowledge that there was no infrastructure there. I was under the assumption that there was infrastructure there. And I believe if you're talking developer versus a purchasing person, I'm not considered the developer. I purchased that. Service Pro developed it. They split it. They did the plot of survey. And actually, what is the code? If you're doing a plot of survey dividing it in the city of Pella, isn't it by code? They should've had sewer already there before. It was legally divided?
We have our P and Z manager here, so hopefully you can answer that question, because I can't.
We handle it, the, for a plot of survey like this, any, the law of the city of Pella, any property within three hundred feet of the sewer must hook to the sewer. Regardless of what the lot is, regardless of what is created, plot of survey subdivision. If it's within three hundred feet of the sewer, any new building must hook to sewer. That's the fundamental rule that we go by every day.
And at three hundred and ninety roughly feet? So, I mean, like I said, if I would've known this prior to, this would've been resolved a year and a half ago. That's where this whole issue is coming from. If it should've been taken care of beforehand. This whole debate we've had, which is, I'm grateful you guys are giving me this touch of time. This has been fantastic. This would never have been here. This would've been built by now.
I would add to what Gerald said. The only time you guarantee a sewer service, water service, and now a secondary storm sewer, we'll talk about that a little bit, is if it's subdivided. Lots of survey are used every day. Sometimes one neighbor wants to sell the other one five feet or twenty feet. Those are unbuildable. That lot, it isn't our business. You can put a fruit stand on there, you don't need a sewer. So when things are sold by plot of survey, and I realize Ralph's not a subdivider developer, and that's where, Mayor, beware. If you are developing, you really need to have somebody in the group or an attorney that's familiar with the rules. Because plot of survey doesn't mean that split off comes with anything. That's a subdivision. They did not subdivide.
And that's why we had three meetings prior to this whole thing until we found it out. I thought we did our due diligence by having a pre-purchase, post-purchase gardener associates, and then we found out we had no sewer. Just consideration. I'm just, I'm looking for help because I thought I burned every possible option because this was supposed to be clear, simple. But who knows? Maybe not.
Okay.
So I, I have one more question.
Yeah, yeah.
And when we give these developers, you know, like, out here at EFCOM, TIP district, and they're putting in the street, is all they're putting in the street in Ghor, in fact, they're putting anything underneath the street? What are they putting underneath the street?
It's all public infrastructure. So they're putting in sanitary sewer. They're also putting in water mains.
And that's part of that, too?
Yes.
Part of their, it's part of their development cost that they had cremated.
Inside the TIP, there's sewer, water, power, whatever. And so if, if we put them in the urban renewal process here and made it a TIP district, you could put in the sewer.
It still doesn't answer question number four, though. Whereas that EFCOM...
Well, that's, that's, that's a real nebulous question, I think.
Well, no, it's not. If, if we, if we put in a street for, if we TIP the first phase of the street, and there's thirty-five lots that are serviced from that, that's thirty-five properties that are serviced from it. So that's, that's the benefit. It's serving.
So if, if Van Ghor redevelops somehow, and they need more capacity of a sewer, or they say, hey, you know, this old mine that's ours is shot. It'd be cheaper to run out and hook into the new one than it would be to rebuild an old one. So you can't, can't say that there's no future development along there because you just don't know. You don't know. See what I mean?
That's what you're saying.
In fact, I hope there's future development along there. There's, those buildings are ugly, you know? It's part of the entry into Pella, and they're just kind of, they're not doing anything. And they, I suppose they're being used inside. Can't see what's going on, but can't see that.
And that business has been sold a few times, too, right? Van Ghor?
Yeah.
Emerson and Van Ghor, and so on. That could change. They could want to do something else. They could upgrade that.
So you put in a good mine that is not eighty years old. I'm surprised Pella Corp is replacing a sewer that's eighty years old on South Street. My sewer's a hundred years old. So it's, it's replacement time. Gets to the point where it's replacement. And Danny said it's, it's not very deep, so it could have problems in really cold weather.
Are you talking about Van Ghor's private?
It's a private lot, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's up to them.
Yeah.
They do, that's not our, that's not our decision to make.
Yeah.
At, at any rate, I, I don't think it's a policy change that we want to make for, for this.
I don't see it as a policy change because it's a TIP, if we do it as a TIP instrument, that's the infrastructure that they'll put in, and then the tax revenue reimburses us. I'm sure the attorneys could find something on that.
Well, comment back there? Yes?
I just have a question. A number of years ago, Country Club in North Hazel was all on septic systems. The EPA came in and shut us down, every single house. And the city came in and went in the sewer for us. But we had to pay part of it as a landowner. The city paid the rest of it. And now Timber View is connecting into that sewer that we all personally had to pay part of. So there we worked together, city and with the sewer. So this was a number of years ago. This isn't something new. The city helped us to get our sewer, but we in turn had to pay. I mean, it was based on square footage of your lot. I think we, back then, paid over five thousand dollars, and that didn't include the hookup. So just something to think about. It has been done before.
I have a question. Is Service Pro hooked up to a sewer? Is that building hooked up? What sewer are they hooked up to?
They're, they're, they go to the other, they go to the other direction.
But that's a private sewer, right?
No. Private sewers from Ghor, Van Ghor to the public sewer. Service Pro's to our sewer system, right? Correctly.
In the right way?
Van Ghor and Service Pro come to a manhole just on the east side of Service Pro, and then go east together, combined, which is illegal, but we have hundreds up in town that have been done over the last hundred years. To a public manhole, our sewer does not start till behind Vanessa's building. That's the public sewer. The other point on Van Ghor's building, we have researches, I don't, beans, they go to the southeast. That whole building underneath and internally could be oriented to the southeast corner. So nothing says it's easier for them to go to the, to the south or any further to the west. I mean, that'd be a whole nother survey sewer system.
All right. Do we have consensus?
No.
No, I don't think we have consensus, but...
I'd love to see that, that lot developed, but this is bad public policy.
I, I was just wondering and reflecting back on something you said, Mayor, and thank you so much for sparking this in, in my memory bank about the market and South Main being considered blight. And I remember when we deemed them urban blight, we did it in two separate segments. We did the Webster School, and then we came back and did, as we all call it, the Big Yellow House. Is there a thought that Mr. Smith can go back now and ask us to deem that area urban blight? Because most assuredly fits most of my parameters for that, that style of dedication. And then that would also open him up to the necessary ways and means that he would need to develop.
Let me answer that question. If you recall, there was some additional details on the Webster School. We actually hired a firm, Cimarran and Corey, that actually evaluated the Webster School area and those three houses, including the Big Yellow House. And what they looked at, there was Iowa standards for blight. And there was an analysis and a building walkthrough, not only the surrounding property, but the building itself. In addition, they looked at code enforcement issues that the cities had over the last, probably safe to say, several years with both the properties. And that all went into an assessment from outside consulting firm that declared the area they thought that it meant Iowa standards for blight. So it wasn't a city council initiated action saying, this, we had a consultant that looked at it. There was quite a bit of work that went into getting to that point on, on the matter, so...
And I appreciate that, and the work that went into it. But the bottom line is, is we did take a, a piece of property that was usable, and we blighted it. And, and I voted for it, and I stand by my vote of blight. But when I look at Mr. Smith's piece of property, I feel like in the Webster dictionary, you'd see the word blight, and then you'd see that lot.
But I think you're, you're referring to the Ghor building.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the piece of...
Just that bare lot?
Yep, yep. Because it, I, when you look at it, I mean, and I, my understanding is, when you do blight, you, don't, you have to do a square circumference or something like that? There's a mathematical...
I think as far as a policy decision, it's a significant item to declare property blighted within the community. And we really did our due diligence on that in a higher level. And I would suggest if we did it again, that we could go through the same procedures. Now, keep in mind, the blighted part parcel was beneficial for the residential aspect of it, was necessary, not necessarily for the commercial aspect.
Well, I'm kind of like Mark. I, I would like to see something imaginative done in that area of our community. I, I, I do applaud Mr. Smith, just like I applauded Mr. Dingeman for taking a piece of property and thinking outside of the box on it. So look at us agreeing. That doesn't happen, does it?
Well, so I've got a Mark skeptical, a hard no from Dave. Then there's somewhere in between. John has indicated that he's supporting Harold.
I'd like to see a nice building. I, I like that building there instead of worthless weeds.
Is Spencer on the phone, or is he gone?
He is operating.
So...
I'm actually here. I just got on.
Could you chime in on your thoughts? Have you heard all the discussion?
Uh, light.
What'd he say?
Which is a little bit like rabies.
Did you hear the discussion and what we're having with this economic development request?
I heard the discussion in part with Dr. Smith. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, I heard part of the discussion, then I had some clients, so didn't end up finishing that out. Are you guys still on that topic?
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll have to get you up to speed and get your opinion after a while, later. We've already spent quite a lot of time on it. So just, just a potential compromise I'll throw out to think about. I, I, I think we need further discussion about it, or before we do it. So, Dr. Smith, would you consider a minimum assessment agreement with a property tax rebate over time?
I'm happy for discussion.
But you, you would have to do the upfront, you'd have to spend the money upfront and maybe, and get a rebate over time.
I would be up for that discussion.
That's, that's, I was thinking that because that's what we did.
That's what we did.
For the, as a minimum assessment, and then it guarantees, it guarantees a kickback.
So let us do some math work on that. That would, that would require us, though, to extend the urban renewal area.
Yep.
So we have, we have to consider that cost to bring this one property into the renewal area. But I think that'd be...
That's a small price.
Yeah, we could...
I, I know of, I know of five properties on Washington Street that will come asking for, for the same thing.
So maybe we need to extend it further. But anyway.
Yes, I know the problems you're talking about. It just came to, there's a couple more across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I don't know, I'm not saying that I'm advocating for that, but it's just something I thought of. Potentially could be a compromise that maybe would work.
I have no trouble seeing that one, where manufacturing property wanting to be...
So we, we need to have some more discussion about it and figure out how we, like I said, my biggest concern is that this is, if we just do it, it's a policy change. And then we're going to be fighting the policy for a long time, I'm afraid, so... Okay. Well, thanks for the discussion. Thanks for being here and informing us about your situation. Appreciate it. We, we love development, so hopefully we can figure it out and make it happen. All right, stormwater review.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And we're here to talk tonight about its recent stormwater events that we've had in our community. Probably more importantly, what are we doing from a go-forward basis? And we're going to cover a specific recommendation that we have this evening. We've received a proposal for a mainstream camp for an engineering analysis on stormwater needs in Pella. But to get everyone up to speed on this item, it's important anytime you talk about stormwater regulations from a city standpoint, two thousand and seven is a significant year of the city's current stormwater detention requirement's been in place since two thousand and seven. So anything constructed prior to two thousand and seven, they may have not had the same infrastructure requirements for new developments on theirs, which may be a contributing factor to stormwater issues within our community as well. Regardless of this, anytime you talk about addressing stormwater issues, particularly developments they've had, could be considered a lack of infrastructure, this is a policy decision for the city. And it's very important that we go about it in a comprehensive manner, get all the facts on the table before we make decisions on, on the matter. That's what we're here to talk about tonight, is really the process going forward. So I'm going to move through these items very quickly this evening. If I move too fast, slow me down on, on it. So let's go ahead. Now, as we said, these areas, there's been issues during heavy rainstorm, particularly during the hundred event rain, rainstorm, where there's heavy intensity of rain on this as well. Now, there was an evaluation in Pella that occurred during the seventies, and at that time, the council felt that some, literally over sixty percent of the homes had some type of illegal connection to the city sanitary sewer systems. What happens in absence of a storm sewer on Indian people directly connected to the sanitary sewer system, that's called infiltration and inflow on it as well. And that, that, that contributes to sanitary sewers overflowing and causing a whole host of other issues as well. So what the proper thing some communities have done is they've been looking at INI issues, which typically refer to, try to eliminate INI. And there's been a dual approach with it, and that's to build capacity in the line. That's what we've traditionally focused on, as far as the big effect on it, is to build additional capacity in sanitary sewer system with, with that as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And we do have a diagram on potential connections to the sanitary sewer system. We might circle back with Danny. Keep this map in mind, let Danny talk about INI here, but let's go ahead, please. Now, as we said, the city storm sewer regulations have been in, in place since two thousand and seven. Now, as we said, the city storm sewer regulations have been in, in place since 2007. Now, as far as funding for potential public improvements from the storm sewer that has come from the city's road use tax funds, that is also the same fund that supports street improvements within our community as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as larger projects, what we've talked about in the past is there's an area generally, it's on the eastern side of our communities, between East Eighth and East Fifteenth Street, that we're aware of a development that is lacking stormwater infrastructure. So when we talk about bigger projects that need a stormwater improvements, in addition to the INI issue, we have just developments that lack storm, stormwater improvements that do need segments of town. One of the areas that we are aware of is from East Eighth, East Fifteenth Street. And we'll circle back with Denny here shortly and talk about these bigger, bigger areas or bigger potential projects. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the solution, Denny, why we're here and talking about, about this. Denny, if you could chime in, if, if we were to install public infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure in there, that's one part of the issue. The other part is to build additional improvements on this. So if you could please give council an overview of that.
Yeah, some of us have talked about it before, as you know. And with this whole area lacking, there is storm sewer along the university, but it was pretty much designed. We upgraded a little bit of it with that last project, it was that four or five years ago. Years keep getting by. But now that all of this is established, in other words, most of these houses have footing drains, sump pumps, a lot of them hooked to the sanitary sewer. And I have show and tell back there, a lot of them have gates. They've lived, they've learned to live with it over the years. Newbies come in, a lot of our complaints during this last rain were people who bought in the last year or four years. And we all know we haven't had that intense rain for almost five years, like we experienced two of them here in the last couple of months. But anyway, this project, the improvement would be, anything the school does is going to require some additional detention. So one idea is make this detention larger before it hits Eighth Street. So choke that color down, come up through here with bigger pipe, medium-sized pipe enlargements all along university. Come up each of these streets, maybe partway with twelve-inch, the rest way with the eight-inch that we're putting in new subdivisions now where there's not concrete pipe, same way. So you can picture new storm sewer up every one of them. But then the key, like in a new subdivision, we run a, a four or six-inch, yeah, it's a four-inch storm sewer or sump pump drain line to each, to the right-of-way line. And that's what you get in a new subdivided lot. You get storm sewer for that sump pump. So in that case, you know, you, so you picture, let's say it's thirty-six inch. This would be huge. We're talking sixty, seventy-two inch storm sewer probably to get to a pond, you know, that we can jointly grade out with the school district, across the parking lots. You know, no doubt going to be extremely expensive. But that's how we got to get there because that is the drainage basin. But then the key is, you know, some people have learned to live with it. And they're okay, they don't want to do anything different. But a good chance are their footing drain and sump pumps are already going in the sanitary. They just don't get the backup that maybe the neighbor does. And we've seen cases where one neighbor fixes theirs, all of a sudden the dry house next door, he gets six inches now. And this happens all the time. It's just, it's constant back and forth. So in our opinion, a project like I'm talking here, we'd have to go in and mandate every house. You get your stuff out of the sanitary, you prove it to us, you know, we'll inspect it, whatever, you know, maybe there's a council contribution to that on the private side, too. Other communities have talked about that. But it's going to be extremely difficult on each and every individual house to get to that final step of hooking up. Because now you've got a whole neighborhood with nothing, you know, and they're not geared for that. They don't have a pipe coming, or they had sump pump and those footing drains aren't necessarily piped to head to the front of the house. So that's kind of it in a nutshell of what we would look at. An engineer, you know, hired somebody like Gordon, Meemster and Kim to come in and refine what I just talked about.
Is that our, is that our biggest area problem?
If, if we're to circle areas that have a total lack of storm sewer, that's our biggest. You know, and it's buried in the memo. In the seventeen-plus years I've been here, our street department, they love small projects. We've had a lot of nuisance areas where two or three houses in a row, they run twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, created ice dams in the winter, moss in the summer. We've taken on dozens of those in the last seventeen years where we can lay a couple hundred feet of eight-inch pipe and throw five or six-inch tile in that are just constantly running to get them into the storm sewer. And you can drive all of that, we're pretty dry now. Do have a bad one in the alley by Lightning State Bank. And I know several, we've been getting phone calls on it. We've ran the eight-inch, a block and a half up the street, it's thirty-five feet away for them to hook up their sump pump. And they haven't done it yet. So, but we've done dozens of those in, like I say, just isolated areas. Because to go into an area like that, we've just got nothing there to hook to. To start out running the eight-inch, this is overwhelmed, university was flooded. Instead of getting it full, it'd be two feet deep. So that's kind of one of the larger areas, really some major construction involved there. I don't know, yeah, four hundred millions, two to three, I'm guessing. By the time you get to that bigger pipe to get the intention on it.
Is the majority of the burden of runoff from the houses or from the streets?
Basically, the street water is not the problem. Street water's not getting in the basements. So once it's up there, that's a preferred place to have it, actually, up on the surface. You know, the houses that can get their footing drain, sump pump, just out to the front yard, we, we get in the middle of squabbles all the time. We try to keep them ten feet from the property line. And you know, when you're on the side hill, that's kind of, ten feet doesn't do a whole lot. It runs to the neighbor. Another example of the INI problem, and then we've had, over the last couple of years since we started this discussion again, during a rain like we just, those, both of those rains would have fit this bill, the older part of town in a three-inch rain, we will jump at the plant from an average daily flow of about one-point-two, one-point-three. From the older part of town, we will jump ten times the flow from that area. Newer parts, such as Bosch, Found Hills, as we can separate it, they'll still jump about four times the normal flow from the sanitary sewer, which should be all black water, all sewage. So you can tell, even with the newer plastic pipes, the newer manholes with the A-Lox system, with the rubber gaskets, when the water table's high, down below, there's so much pressure in the system. And that's why also we got a lining sample. You know, when we line these sewers, one thing it improves is the old clay joints. When you see my sample, it's actually in plastic. You can picture that as a piece of clay that's cracked and broken. Every one of those joints is leaking when that water table's high. So they're just squirting. If you run a camera through there and height, well, you can't because it's surcharged, it's underwater. And that's common in these last two rains. A lot of our sewers, the manholes are full. Therefore, the hydraulic grade line is up near the casket. So that's putting pressure back through the sewer service. And therefore, that's why some people get a foot, two foot, because it's backflow. But a lot of it, whenever, yeah, so it is horrible when you get in the basement, no doubt. But a lot of it's their own water flooding themselves. It's just the not-so-nice stuff, may only be one percent of it. But all that clear water from their footing tiles and that sump pump is just adding on top of it. When our sewers are in surcharge, they fold. So, you know, this, this would be a start of chasing in an area, no doubt make it better. Some engineers have been in it for years. They'll tell you, you spent twenty-third years in it, you may still not see it, you made it a dent. But if you do everything I said up to mandate in a whole row of houses, you've just made those ten houses a rope better. No doubt, and more livable, long-term.
I think this is one of the number-one problems that I find in my ward. And as lately as this evening, I had a lady call me. She lost her husband, she is in one of these houses in this area. And every time she leaves, she has to remember to close that flap.
Yes.
In case it rains. And she feels grateful because if she forgets, it's only two to three inches and her water is clear. But on the opposite side of the street, if they forget, it's black.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and to me, I just feel like this is, this is our problem, too. That, you know, we need to be able to ensure people to have a safe environment in which to come home to and which to leave. And you're talking about, oh my gosh, I am in Ottley and it started to rain and I'm going to come home because I, and I didn't get that flap closed enough. And, and I have talked with people where their children have come home from school. Mom is at work, dad is at work. And they close the flap, but when you close the flap, you can't use your restroom.
Just a couple times. Don't always close.
So this particular time, there were two little girls that had just come home from school. They were on the phone with their mom, needed to use the bathroom and couldn't use the restroom in their own house because the flap had to remain closed because it was raining. I mean.
You don't flush that?
Well, I, I get it. And that seems like a simplistic answer, but to me, it isn't the right answer. I, I just feel like.
I can tell on the flat gate that Lynn has talked about. Here I have both. I've tried to get plumbers to go along with me and install them in every new house. These two are worth a hundred and thirty dollars. And when you're building a house, you hook PVC to both ends on your service going out at pretty cheap. The flap Lynn's talking about, everybody called it an automatic. But I tell you, it just, when the sewer from the street, this is your sewer going out and this flap opens up. The problem with it, if you don't routinely go down there and check the cleanout, TP or something will hold it open. And if it's cracked open, it'll still backflow into you.
Absolutely.
If you know you have a problem, we call this the guillotine. You shut this before you leave home, or you shut this when the rain's coming down. And that's where I'm, I'm a fan of putting them both in. But if you're in a basement where they weren't done originally, sometimes they have to dig on the outside to do some of this type of stuff. Sometimes you can do it in the corner of the basement. You have to tear up an area of concrete to sort it out. It's pretty cheap insurance in the older parts of town. Now, real quick, I'll just show you this. Picture if this is the clay pipe that we put in eighty-eight, a hundred years ago, now it's all cracked. The lining company, actually, this comes on a roll, it's soft, and we pull it in off the roll. They blow it up with air and high-pressure steam. Cure it for about two hours, and it turns into that pink hard lining. All one solid stretch, one manual together. My bus has dropped in. And then they go back in robotically with a little cutter, just a little miniature truck with a joystick, kind of like a video game. And he goes back, they know exactly where that sewer, sewer service was, and they cut the hole and reestablish the service. But in that, where that's not perfect in an older area, it's now from the Y to the house, it's, might be a hundred years old and it's junk. And then throughout Pella, we've had a lot of plumbers, instead of cutting hole or using the sewer service that was over here for that lot, provided fifty to a hundred years ago. Oh, here's the sewer here, we've dug it up here. And they beat a hole in it and stuck the pipe in the top. And then eventually the pipe falls into the pipe. We can cut it off with these guys, we cut them off all the time. But now you can picture in a high-water table area, it's, it's major ion off. So our sewers are adding to it, too, don't get me wrong. Tremendous amount of salt water, or when the water table's hot.
So what, what do we need to do tonight?
Okay, very good question. I'll jump right to the chase on it. As Denny mentioned, we have another project out there, a bigger project. Even a million-dollar, multi-million dollars of improvements in it. What you're really talking about, anytime you talk about public infrastructure policy, as Denny stated, there's going to be some homeowner, likely homeowner responsibilities to reduce INI, public investment. When we look at, if we were to go right now, an issue, debt for these types, fund these types of improvements, particularly what I call stormwater transmission veins on it, new detention areas, that would be funded by general obligation debt. Issue of general obligation debt would be paid by property owners in, in Pella. What we talked about previously is looking at a stormwater utility. And the reason for the stormwater utility is it could give another revenue source for the city to potentially fund some of these improvements. But another thing, when we talk about property taxes, is not all entities pay property taxes, but all, but some of these entities may contribute to stormwater issues within, within the community. If you look at some of the nonprofits, for instance, they would not pay property taxes. But do they contribute to stormwater issues potentially on it? And that's the reason why cities consider stormwater utilities. Where we're at with this, because we're looking at potentially large public investments, you're looking at policy issues on it. We feel that we, in order to do this, we need to have a thorough evaluation, at least identify potential projects that could all reduce stormwater concerns on it. And as far as evaluating whether a stormwater utility would be needed or could be beneficial to the utility. So we'd like IRB and Meemster and Kim, have them look at the issue. They would look at potential improvements. They'd probably come back with improvements in each quadrant of the community for stormwater, for stormwater improvements. They'd also look at potential revenue estimates and proposed rates for a stormwater utility. They're willing to do this analysis for fifty-four-hundred dollars on it as well. If we can get them started, which we plan to do if council's in agreement with it, we can be back later this fall and talking about the next steps on this. But I really feel, unless we do a comprehensive analysis and take a look at where there's pinpoints in the system and identify improvements, then talk about where we go for clearer. You almost got to start off with the engineering analysis first.
You should have just started with this.
Yeah.
Well, and this is the start.
Denny wouldn't have been able to show us. Yeah, that's true, Denny wouldn't have been show and tell.
Yeah, and Bob's doing this at a high level. There's, you know, this is minimum dollars. Yeah, it's not going to get us to a project or, you know, he'll know that areas we can go to some of our records. The other complaint I had in the last couple rains, and what trips people up, you know, the average, I think, American, they say moves every five years. Well, a lot of our complaints this year, people, first question I had, how long you can live there? Oh, two years, oh, three years. What did your sellers disclose? And so many of them, the answer would be, are there water problems? And people answer those disclosures, none. And I tell you, I let it be known, once we know, but we try to keep records. And our, our records are public. And I've got a couple lawsuits brewing now where there was serious water in these houses and they didn't get told. That's I, first thing I'd tell them, go talk to your realtor and start there. But a whole bunch of them, I'm guessing, uh, twenty-some major complaints, over half of them new owners. Because a lot of the owners just live, I lived in a house growing up. We had it in Free City, and those pumps about three blocks down. Anytime it rained, they'd just pump it out the ditch. I think they're still doing that to this day. At the whole north end of that town, everybody got watered, you just lived with it.
Well, this is a good first.
It is.
Let's, let's get going.
You think, uh, already, I think the last item that we have tonight of Mr. Mayor is the telecommunion ambulance, Pella's ambulance department has a new class there recently authorized to serve as a school EMS. And we're going to turn over very shortly to Chief Jacob Offen to walk council through this. But before we begin authorizing, offering the classes, we wanted to run this with my council just to make sure if there's any questions, we answered them upfront. What you see is the proposed rates that we have for the students, for the class. Mandy, if we can give us like two, please, just a brief overview. It's important to note that classes were being taught by staff during the regularly scheduled work shifts on it as well. And then we also believe, staff and city administration believes that we can offer these classes without increasing or creating a unnecessary, not unnecessary, without additional call-ins for our staff as well, which has been, which has been one of the items that we're trying to work towards a solution on. So with it, the proposed fees are intended to cover the class materials and labor costs. It's also intended to be a profit, make profit for the city's ambulance department. And city administration is actually recommending that we proceed with the classes directed with that. Chief Jacob Offen, do you want to walk council through it? Do you have any additional details that I didn't cover?
Sure, we're excited to talk about this tonight. It's been a three-year process for us to do this. Back in 2020, there was a mass exodus of healthcare workers out of the EMS and healthcare professions due to COVID. The state was looking at ways to try and, and get more providers to be able to be on the ambulance because there was a shortage of them. In 2021, they passed and allowed services to become training facilities or certified schools. To my knowledge, we are the third service to actually complete the whole process in the state. So that's a huge deal. I've got a staff that is super excited for this. I've got five actually certified instructors that have taken a forty-hour course to become EMS instructors, which is unheard of. We've got ten evaluators on staff. Everything that we've done, I hired Adam Novak, who was in charge of Mercy College's EMS program back in 2021. And this has been his kind of baby from then. And he set this up right the first time. So we're excited about that. The fees that we set, Mercy College is nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. We set ours at fourteen hundred dollars. DMAC is eighteen hundred dollars and Indian Hills is two thousand dollars for EMT class. The reason we choose, chose fourteen hundred is we are going to be offering some of the things in our cost that Mercy makes you pay outside, and it just screws up the whole onboarding process. So we're very comparable to them because they are not offering a degree, which we don't offer a degree, we offer a certification. The reason that Indian Hills and DMAC are obviously more is because they are getting college. The reason that Indian Hills and DMAC are obviously more is because they are getting college credit hours for that compared to what we're doing. So, we've got a figure that the cost breakdown, I can give you guys all a sheet if you guys request it, that anything after two students, we are actually, cost, we're in the green. So, it's a huge thing. We're, we're not just for Pella ambulance, for, for everybody in the county and the surrounding communities. They don't have to travel to Des Moines anymore. We're right here. Our costs are way down because we've been a satellite school for DMAC and Mercy for the last seven years as I've been here. And so, we had all this stuff already here that would have cost a lot if we were trying to start this on our own. So, we're excited about it. Staff's excited about it, and we want to start our first school here at the end of the month.
What do you, you have a projection, what you think for numbers students you'd attract?
I think we've got eight already that are just waiting for the okay. We, and we haven't advertised yet either. So, once we say, hey, we're having that class for sure, this is the, the actual price, I'm expecting us to be up closer to sixteen, which would be a huge class.
Well, Eric likes to say it's a no-brainer, so.
Yep.
I don't know what.
Were you speaking for all of us, Mayor?
What?
Were you speaking for all of us?
I didn't hear any pushback. Is there anything else we would have to do?
No, we're going to proceed as directed, so.
Sounds good. All right. Do you have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter thirty-eight point nine, paragraph one, to discuss marketing and pricing strategies or proprietary information of a city utility if its competitive position would be harmed by public disclosure, not required of potential or actual competitors, and if no public person, purpose would be served by such disclosure? Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any discussion? Just say, hey, we got a vote on this closed session motion. Hang on. Okay, so all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, so we're going to go into closed session, so we're going to shoo all of you out of here. I don't anticipate there will be any motion coming out of closed session, but we will allow you back in if you so choose when we're done with our discussion. We're back in open session. There are no motions to consider, so I entertain motion two adjourned. For Brandon Horst and Hopkins, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Or is that Carl Stone?
That's fine.
Here's Carl Stone.
That was terrible. Sorry.
Hopkins is terrible.
All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
We are adjourned.